Good evening Danvers. Can they hear me? Okay. Good evening Danvers. Welcome to the April 8th School Committee Meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. And is there anyone else in the audience who is recording the proceedings? Okay. So we're gonna go a little bit out of order just at the beginning. We're gonna have the Smith Bulldogs come up first. So, welcome. And families, if you want to take pictures like feel free sorry to come over there up if you want to. Because I know you can only see their backs, so.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us tonight. Along with the district, we have been working very hard to instill a sense of belonging within our school community. We understand how important it is for all of our students and staff to be seen, to be heard, and to feel included in all aspects of Smith School. With me tonight, I have some friends that would like to tell you all about our Love and Humanity Project, about our students learning different languages, and about friendship. During our Love and Humanity Project, each grade level had to research an important human that made some type of a contribution to the world.
Hello, my name is Alice Warden. I'm a kindergarten. We learned about Ray Charles. He was a talented musician. He played music that people still love today. Did you know that Ray Charles was even blind? But he could still play music and never gave up. One of his famous songs is Hit the Road Jack. Hit the road, Jack, and don't you come back no more, no more, no more, no more. Hit the road, Jack, and don't you come back no more. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nora Hines. And for Love and Humanity Project, first grade pick Jane Goodall. She wanted to become a scientist, but other people said, "No. Girls can't be scientists, only boys."
Hi, my name is Sam McLaughlin. Back then, men thought they had more rights than women, but Jane Goodall proved them wrong.
She started, she wanted to become a scientist so much and started to study about chimpanzees. She studied chimpanzees in Africa. Jane Goodall is still alive.
And now there are so many women scientists all across the world. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Opet. I speak Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. I love to play soccer. In fifth grade, we relearned about Jackie Robinson, but he didn't play soccer. He played baseball. We were, he was so special because he was the first black person to play baseball. People were not nice to Jackie. But he did not give up. And he kept trying and trying. One day, I want to be a soccer player. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Miguel Donasimento, and I'm a fifth grader. At the beginning of the year, Jeff Lee was a new student. He didn't know how to speak any English, but I speak English and Portuguese. So, I started translating words to Jeff Lee. Then we became closer and closer. We became best friends and I helped Jeff Lee in the classroom by translating and helping him with math problems. It must be hard to learn English because when I came to America from Brazil, I also needed to learn English. Because we're best friends, we have a special handshake. And only we know how to do it. Would you like to see it?
Hello, my name is John Canjiano, and this is my friend Hobenji. At the beginning of the year, we got a new student. He didn't speak any English. He spoke Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole.
But now, I can't speak English. When I come to school, I, I didn't know what to say to everyone. I was so nervous. I made a best friend. That made me feel good and welcomed.
I noticed that Hobenji was feeling uncomfortable and it must be so hard to have to learn a different language. I got right to work and started to learn Spanish. I asked my parents to buy me an English-Spanish dictionary and started practicing. I had a notebook that I would write all the words in. A few weeks ago, we had our literacy week and it was about sharing languages and sharing books. We learned about different alphabets. We made inspirational posters in different languages. And we read with our buddies. And Hobenji just said in English, "It's so important to be kind to everyone and respect each other."
Hola, me llamo Holly Murphy y soy la profesora de inglés en la escuela Smith. Este es solo un ejemplo de cómo los estudiantes y el personal construyen una comunidad. Al concentrarse en todos y conectarse con otros. Hi, my name is Holly Murphy and I'm the English as a Second Language teacher at Smith School. This is just one example of how students and staff build community by connecting with others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And does anyone have any questions? Does anyone on the committee?
For you, John, how long did it take you to speak Spanish? And is there anything you can say to us in Spanish today?
I'm still tra, I'm still, I'm still starting to learn it, but I know a few words. Buenas dias.
Are there any other questions?
I don't know if I'd say any questions, but you all presented wonderfully. And it's really clear that there's a great spirit at Smith School. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we have no information, right? We don't think so, maybe it's students. Okay, okay. All right. All right, so we can start now with public comment. If you come up and just say your name. And if we're trying to limit to like three minutes, if possible, as close as possible. So. You're up? Yeah. Go first.
This is my negotiating committee. Moral support. Hello, my name is Shannon Shan. I have lived in Danvers most of my life. My parents, my sister and I, and my children are all products of the Danvers Public School System. I began subbing as a teacher's aide in 2005. After a break to provide childcare for my niece, I returned full-time in 2015. Tonight, I am here in my role as an aide to represent the over 100 employees who work as teacher aides and behavior techs in the district. We are currently negotiating a new contract and are here to ask for your support. Our current situation is bleak. With an entry-level hourly rate of $17,07, or $19,869 per year, Danvers aides are paid less than aides in every neighboring community. Aides on the top of our scale are faring no better with a maximum hourly rate of $23,13, or $26,923 per year. This is what aides who have been here 15 years or more are making. We have 13 aides in this category who are highly skilled with invaluable experience. I'm sure that they would attest to the fact that this role has changed dramatically over all these, those years. When I started subbing in 2005, I did a lot of cutting things out for teachers, copying, laminating, and lunch and recess duty. Today, the job has changed into a true instructional assistant. There is very little, if any, time for copying anymore. We are pulling small groups often without the benefit of planning time, modifying curriculum on the fly, working one-on-one with students, proctoring MCAS, covering classes often with little notice, and we still cover lunches and recesses. We maintain behavior charts and logs for students. We work with children with mental health challenges, learning differences, and behavioral struggles. The work that we do is important. We are the backbone of the schools. Without us, teachers often can't do the teaching that they need to do. We provide the classroom support that fulfills many students' IEPs. The work that we do has value and should be compensated commensurately. Unfortunately, our pay scale has not kept up with the changes to our roles. But times are changing and neighboring communities are recognizing the importance and value of their paraprofessionals and paying them appropriately, with some now starting at $40,000 per year. Danvers must do the same. Because Danvers is already at the bottom of local pay scales, we have a lot of catching up to do. The district has struggled for some time to hire and retain aides and subs. And without a significant adjustment, this is only going to get worse. We all know how expensive everything has gotten. The MIT Living Wage Calculator estimates that a single person in Essex County would need an annual salary of $46,000 to meet their basic living expenses. At a max of $26,923, our highest-paid aides are almost $20,000 below this minimum. As a result, although about half of our aides live in town, the vast majority rely on someone else to help with housing costs and a solid third have at least one additional job. Given all this data, we feel that a reasonable proposal is an entry-level salary of $35,000 and a scale that tops out at just over 44. I am fully aware that this is a huge ask, but quite frankly, Danvers has gotten a bargain from us for many years now. If we are to maintain and even improve our schools, I don't think that we can afford to not make this change. Without significant improvement in our compensation, very good aides will retire or go to other districts. I am amazed each day at the work that my colleagues do with students. We do not want to lose these people. I have talked a lot about our aides, but our behavior techs are a newer and critical part of our school teams. They have just come under our contract and we are getting to know more about all that they do. We have some work to do to bring unity to their roles and fair compensation to their contract as well. Despite the financial circumstances, when surveyed in the fall, the most common answer to what is the number one reason you choose to work as a teacher's aide was the kids. One aide said, "I deeply enjoy the connections I make with students and staff. Being able to help a student who might be struggling make progress and reach a goal is truly fulfilling. We love what we do. That's why we're here. Please support us as we support the children of Danvers." Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
On President 1098, Danvers Mass. A lot of people know me, have talked. I support what's said. And again, it's, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight. It's not a quick fix. It's something that at least you show us you intend to get to our point that we need to be. We're all in favor for it. These people work every day. And they're committed to their kids and everything else about their schooling. And they just, you know, want to be on a level playing field, especially with what you see every day. All right, we don't want that here. And it's not gonna happen there, under my watch. I think we can work together as a unit to make that climb up to where they want to be. It's not gonna happen a day, a year. It's gonna be a few years. But again, I hope that we're able to do that. And I, I, I all, I think everybody here understands that needs to be happened. Thank you, President 1098.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie DeMurs and I'm the elementary literacy coach. I just wanted to speak very briefly tonight in support of the teacher's aides as they negotiate their contract. And I just wanted to start with a little background. This fall will be my 20th year in the Danvers Public Schools. I taught first grade at Highlands for five years, first grade at Great Oak for five years. My daughters went to Smith School. And I start with that just for a couple of reasons. First, I feel like it definitely demonstrates my commitment and dedication to this district. I think Danvers Public Schools is a wonderful place to be and I am good press all the time to other teachers and families. And secondly, because in all that time, I have seen the roles of teacher's aides increase exponentially over the years, but their salaries have not reflected that. And when we talk about salaries, we use words like comparable, competitive, equal, relative, proportionate. But when it comes to the aides, the correct word is livable. And I think the other night at teacher negotiations, Steve Botha mentioned that Danvers was losing some of our line workers because of local communities who were paying more and that they had to like intervene and get them a raise to compete. And I think we're gonna be in the same predicament with our aides. And I know the school committee, you are committed to our special education program. I know you asked for more money from the town and I know that they provided that funding. And I think an essential part of that work is to be able to attract and retain teacher's aides. I think of a pay increase as an investment in our Danvers Public School Student Services. And it starts with compensating our current aides, but in my head, it's also a long game. I feel like we have an opportunity to collaborate and I would love to be part of this work. To participate with feeder schools, have a pipeline from all the wonderful colleges that we have around here, Salem State, Gordon, for example. They are immersed in science of reading. We really do hope to scoop up some of their graduates. And with those, making connections with colleges, we could have student teachers who then become aides, who then become classroom teachers. But we will not be able to do this with the current pay scale. Graduates will simply not be able to pay their rent or their student loans. I, I feel like we can be the district, like the go-to district. Look what Danvers is doing with the local colleges. Look at how Danvers honors their aides. And again, I know it's a long game. And I know, you know, a lot of people thinking, "Well, we can't afford to give them a raise." And my personal feeling is that we can't afford not to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Patrick Heller. I've taught at Thorpe School in Danvers since 2008 and I'm also the parent of a Thorpe Tiger. So I'm just here to support my colleagues in the teacher's aides union as both a colleague and as a parent who sees the benefits of all the hard work they do every day. I mean, it's been said before, but I can say just how much the job has changed in terms of demand and what my colleagues are asked to do every day. And I say this as a classroom teacher. Our schools would not run on a daily basis without the work that all our great paraprofessionals do. And not only would the schools not operate as they should, also the experiences of students like my son in learning centers who need direct one-on-one support would not be met and their school experience would not be what it should be. And I completely agree with what Carrie said. And I really think it's a matter of not that it can be afforded to, but it can't be afforded not to. I know obviously the teachers union's in a negotiation this year. That's very important. But equally important is that my colleagues are compensated fairly. They shouldn't have to work a second job, given all they do on a daily basis for the pay that they get. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I know we don't usually say anything usually after public comment. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything on the committee? Any comments, questions?
I do, but if anyone wants to go first.
And I know you've been part of the negotiations.
All right, sure. I just want to say that I appreciate everything that was said tonight. I appreciate you all being here and showing support for your union. Your solidarity is a good thing. Not gonna talk numbers because there has never been a percentage of trying to negotiate in a live school committee meeting. I just want to say we appreciate all that you do and that we're gonna continue to work very hard, as hard as possible, to reach a fair agreement that in some way satisfies all of us and we can move forward. But thank you for what you do for our students. It doesn't go unnoticed. There are financial realities, as I think you've alluded to, but we'll do our best to get to a place that works for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to echo what Mr. Crane said. As an educator for 18 years, I see the value. I see what happens every day in the classrooms with teacher aides. And we appreciate the active role and value that all of the educators within our district have played. And like Mr. Crane said, we are still actively negotiating new contracts and we are confident that it'll be fair to teachers, to teacher aides, food service, administrative assistance, students, families, and the district. But thank you for coming. We always appreciate hearing from you and finding out more information. And thank you very much. You were heard. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest. It's up to you. Everyone wants to leave after they talk all the time.
They've had long days.
I know, I know. I understand. So we'll just start. I didn't get to ask if there was information from anyone in our school committee. School committee, anyone?
No.
Comments, interest?
I think we should talk a little bit about the virtual meeting that I believe is scheduled. Two of us have conflicts then and then. I'm wondering if, if possible, we could pick a different.
So the 22nd is Passover? Just, just let us know. So we don't know if we could do the 29th virtual?
Whatever works for the committee.
So you're thinking Monday, the 29th?
Yes, I think, I mean, it was still with a Monday, yeah.
I meant to flag that earlier.
Unless you never want to see Alice or I again.
Me too, if you want to wait till after the election.
No, no. I want to celebrate you two. That's why we need to be here.
Probably 6:30, like normally. I mean, if we need, do you need it earlier? That's fine. Okay.
No conflicts on.
Is 6 better than? I don't know what the timeframe is.
Earlier the better.
Can we do 6?
Yeah, we're hoping to do a subcommittee of curriculum updates.
We could do it a little bit earlier?
If you like.
All right, so we'll do.
At the will of the committee.
Or Gabe, if he's calling in at 6 hours.
Yeah, I mean, we can be a little bit flexible if, yeah. We can, Alice and I can figure that out, that, a specific, a specific time. So 5:30, is that what we said?
Sure.
5:30, virtual, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so that, anything else? Okay. So Superintendent Bauer?
Well, we have two esteemed guests. But I would like to introduce before we do Senator Lovely and Representative Carradine, if we could bring forward our new principal, the Great Oak School, who will begin July 1 for an introduction to the school committee. Amanda Murphy.
Thank you, everyone.
So I may call her, her name is Amanda Murphy, but I may call her Mandy. That's what she tends to go by. But she's been in Marblehead Schools for 20 years. Started out as a school counselor, guidance counselor, and moved her way up to being principal of the village school. She is an outstanding educator. She's student-first. I've had the great pleasure of working with her in Marblehead and has seen how she interacts with students. I've seen that firsthand, as well as families and educators. And, you know, she's really one that, certainly from the feedback from the community, as well as from the staff and our administrative team. Certainly came in very, very strong and everybody's very excited for her to begin on July 1. And we've started the process of transition. She'll be connecting with the Great Oak PAC after the break to see if she can get together for an evening, meet and greet Principal Murphy. But without further ado, I'd turn it over to Principal Murphy.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone this evening and to meet you from here. I'm very excited to join the Danvers community, the Great Oak community. It was apparent when I walked in the building at Great Oak how wonderful the school it was, very welcoming. I had the pleasure of meeting with staff and with parents and both were very positive experiences. I saw dismissal a little bit too, so it was fun to see all the students leaving at the end of the day. So it really feels like a perfect fit for me. I'm excited. I've been in Marblehead for 20 years, as Dr. Bauer said, but, you know, having a little bit of change is good and I'm excited for this change and looking forward to joining this community. If you have questions or anything, I'm very excited.
No, just welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
We're glad to have you here. We'll have plenty of time to ask questions in the next year.
I figure.
And the Great Oak community is very excited. I've heard very positive feedback, so.
I echo that. Very positive feedback for your interactions with them, so.
Well, it's been very welcoming. I've gotten some great emails from people welcoming me and I'm looking forward to meeting with everyone and getting to know the community and helping, so.
Yeah, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Yep, we'll see you soon. And this evening, we have legislative updates by Ms. Sally Carrance and Mr. Joe Lovely. If they want to come up, I don't know if you would like them to be seated at the table for a discussion or at the podium?
They can sit down. We have room.
Okay.
Probably more comfortable. You can sit down. Hi, we always make you stand and it's so, so pressure.
We're flexible.
We just think this is a great time. There's so many things going on. Obviously, we're in the throes of our budget and the other pieces of legislation that are on the Hill and so it was a great opportunity to get an update straight for two legislators that really support our schools. And I know they're a phone call away and a text away and we appreciate all that they do to support our district and our community.
Well, shall I start?
Yes, please.
So thank you all. Nice to see you. Great job by, okay, they've gone on. So many of those women are, were, our kids were in school together at Highlands School. Of course, David Hester and I were in school together at Tapley many years ago, around the time of the first solar eclipse, so that's kind of a nice symmetry. I am, I am aware of the pressures that are upon all of us at the local level and at the state level on education. I'm aware of our commitment, but I do agree that when we have the personnel who are working with a child who might be in full meltdown mode, earning a pittance compared to their colleagues, that needs to be addressed. And I must say, I was so surprised to learn that in our town, our paraprofessionals are not part of the teachers' union. They are part of AFSMI. And no knock on AFSMI, big supporter of AFSMI. But I wonder if perhaps maybe the conversation could be steered towards the educational work and contributions of our paraprofessionals, without whom the whole train would come to a screeching halt. And so I appreciate that. And you're listening to me say this thinking, oh, well, that's rich because she's from the state and we're going to be scrapping for every nickel we can get and we are facing less than robust revenues, as you know. We're growing, but we're not growing as much as we need to be. So I lay that all out just in the spirit of candor and commitment to work with you, particularly through the difficulties of the situation that you are all handling so beautifully. It was a delight to hear those students and it makes me very, very proud, very proud of the work that you're all doing and the commitment of our teachers, really at the classroom level, right? And, and welcome to Ms. Murphy. Andy, did she go?
She did.
So with all of that said, at the state level, yes, we have completed about 100 hours of testimony of the Ways and Means Committee, which is our budget committee, kind of going through the same exercise that you all have been doing over the past couple of months to shape your budgets and figure out what your revenues are going to be. And you're a member of Ways and Means. I'm a member of Ways and Means. I am not a member of Ways and Means, so not this session, but you went to, I think, every, you crisscross the Commonwealth. I did. I went to every single one and I stayed for every single hour except one when I had to leave to get back for some good reason. But yes, it was quite educational, from Greenfield to Gloucester to Berkeley. Have you ever been to Berkeley, Mass? Yeah, there's a Berkeley. To Dayton. So it was a tremendous education. It always is. We were very impressed with Secretary Tuttweiler. And of course, they have, you know, full funding of the Student Opportunity Act is front and center, though not every commitment that we would like is hard and fast yet, but that one is. And of course, because we have the fair share funding, things are looking promising. But we're concerned. We are definitely concerned. I will say that one of the things that I was encouraged to hear was the work around the Chapter 74 programs to kind of, we want to keep our enrollments because higher enrollments is a good thing. And if the Chapter 70 programs, Chapter 74, rather, those are the vocational ed programs that give a student a taste of a vogue program, rather than full tilt, as my good colleague Senator Lovely, who went to the Aggie and then went on to law school after college, no, Aggie College.
Yeah, graduated from law school when I was 50, so, yeah, a few years ago, but got it done.
But it, but.
Always a student, everybody, right? You're always a student.
Lifelong learners. That's the whole idea. So it would be nice if we can kind of retain some of those students. I know that to, obviously, the Chapter 70 funding is critical. Special education transportation, critical. Circuit breaker, critical. There was a conversation about minimum school aid communities, which was kind of interesting because on that particular, at that hearing, the head of MMA was asked, I think it was Natalie Blay of one of the rural areas, who talked very powerfully about the challenges that rural schools are having, which I know what we have is a challenge, but the rural schools are really up against it. And MMA said, well, we wouldn't be able to weigh in on that because we'd have some that would win and some that would not. So we're aware and I am, you know, cautiously optimistic that we'll come through it fairly well. And I'm fully aware of how hard the situation with the federal inaction at the border and what that has brought to us. So it's brought to us a richness for our kids, certainly. To be exposed to children of different cultures, that's important. Have to be realistic about what the costs are. And so I do see a big part of what we do is to make sure you get your reimbursements on time. So, and I know that you'll be vocal as necessary. I think Anne Marie Stronach from DESI has really been outstanding. Do you agree?
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She texted us today.
Yeah, no, she's, she's right on it. And so everyone is aware of these 90 towns, Danvers and Peabody among them, and the extraordinary work that's going on. And it's hard. I know that it's hard, doing all we can to fight for what we need, for what all of you need. Any, any things you want to pass on as particular worries, concerns, more than?
I think it's come up once or twice, like the bird, you mentioned the extraordinary, did you say extraordinary bird in the towns, the 90 towns or the extraordinary, whatever word you used. Is there a way to divide up some of that pressure? So it's not just on Danvers or Peabody? And we could start whether or not, you know, if other school districts can take up, if, once we get to the point of at capacity, other school districts helping with taking on some of the students.
So I'm looking at Dan because we've been having this conversation from the get-go and I had this conversation with Alice Peish as well, who's the chair of, the former chair of the Education Committee and she's running point on this. And I said the same thing. I said, look, we have a wonderful school. I'm equidistant between Fuller Meadow and Highlands. Fuller Meadow just happens to be over the border in Middleton. I imagine they would be more than willing to take children. The federal government won't allow it. The McKinney-Vento Act is in the way. And I don't want to be partisan, but I am telling you, the ways in which the federal government is failing every community, every student in this Commonwealth and across the country, they've come up with a pittance of funding to help with this situation and it's nowhere near what it should be. And there was a bargain. There was, there was legislation and it would have sent $85 million to this state. Billion. A lot of money. A lot of money. And they walked away from it. And I, I am very disappointed that our two senators voted against that, that bill. As hard as it is to, to say that we are at capacity, but we are at capacity. And so I didn't like voting on limits to how long a person can be, a family can be in shelter. I hated that vote. But I don't see an alternative. I don't see how we do anything else when we literally do not have the space and the room. So my hope is that faith groups are going to come together. I know of a guy in Peabody who is talking about a program. We are going to need a lot of support to help our schools maintain this and to continue. But it would be wonderful if only the federal government would either get out of the way or help us. So that's my, yeah.
And there's nothing, is there anything we can do as a school committee? I mean, you're our voice, obviously. I sense the passion and I appreciate it, to be honest. Anything more that can be done?
I mean, it's federal, right? It is federal. And, and I had a conversation with Jeff Riley about this and he's friends with Secretary Card, Dana Cardona, Cardona? My husband has a friend, Maria Cardena, so, okay. Secretary Cardona, who said he's just not amenable to it. And I don't know whether it has to do with not wanting, I, I don't know. And it would be nice if we could have a conversation with them, but, you know, the here and now is, is where we are. And it's really unfortunate that we can't cross boundaries. It gets, you know, complicated. So I'm sorry, Senator.
You're good. Way in. You're good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. First, I just want to say, I walked in at the tail end of the Smith School and the students and the little guy that somebody asked him to say some Spanish. Brought me right back, brought me right back to my own children, who, growing up in Salem, we asked them as kindergarteners to start to learn a second language, Spanish, in a two-way program. And it was, it was a great opportunity. I actually thought I would learn Spanish with them. Boy, was I wrong. I just did not realize. I really needed to be their age, but they all learned it. And my youngest ended up actually majoring in Spanish and international relations at UNH. So, yeah, so kudos to Danvers and, and teaching a second language or reinforcing a primary language. It's great. I also too want to just give a shout out to the pairs. We have seen, as you know, I'm preaching to the choir, the job of a pair has changed dramatically, especially post-COVID. And lots, so many mental health challenges and you all know it better than, than, than we do. And, you know, but they're just, their jobs are that much more, not more, well, more difficult, more complicated and, and they do it with, 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 with great, you know, devotion. And so anyway, shout out to our, all the pairs, not in Danvers and across the district. Also, congrats to Principal Murphy for the Great Oak School. It's great. Love that she's come over from Marblehead and I wish her the best in, in, in her work here. Want to talk a little bit, so I actually had my meeting with the Chair of Ways and Means this morning, Senate Ways and Means, about the budgets. So we talked about Chapter 70 and, and Circuit Breaker, which I will tell you, as the Senate, so the House is crafting their budget now and your budget drops next Wednesday. And then you will debate it like another 10 days later, so not the following week, the week after.
After vacation, yeah.
The Senate's budget will drop mid-May and then we debate that budget the week before Memorial Day weekend. That actually keeps us on task to make sure we're done. And so in meeting with the Chair, I can only speak on the Senate side and it's fresh in my mind of having this conversation this morning with the Chair. We're looking at, you've, you've watched how revenues have fallen, you know, revenue collections have fallen compared to our projections by 200 to 300 million a month over the last nine months, except for March. This past March, it jumped, it was in the black. So that's, that's a good sign. We're cautiously optimistic about that. But based on that, it's almost $300 million less as we build the FY '25 budget compared to the FY '24 budget. And we've already cut almost a billion dollars from the FY '24 budget. As you know, the governor exercised her 9C powers and did some cuts right across the board and, and then, and then took some discretionary funding to be able to plug in some holes. So it didn't, it hurt, but it didn't hurt, and she did it early, on the early side, which makes it hurt less, but still hurts. The good news is, is we have $8.4 billion in our rainy day fund. Can we spend it on, you know, bring it in and plug in holes? No. If we do, what we need is for like a really, you know, for a recession or a pandemic. God forbid that happens again, where we would spend that money. Although I think we're in a bit of a, of a, issues with paying, what we are welcoming, our migrants, our migrant students and our migrant families, captive 75 to 100 families, which if you do the math, is probably upwards of 20,000 people, give or take. We, and that's costing the Commonwealth, you know, a billion dollars for this fiscal year. And the Senate and House have come up with some solutions in our budgets, respective budgets, on, on how to kind of start to have those, those revenues go down so that we can, we need to push the administration respectfully to start to house people. And where do you house them? Well, there's, there's the billion-dollar question. It's really, it's been difficult. But in Salem, Salem is now under what they call a demobilizing effort because Salem houses about just north of 300 people at the Bates Dormitory, which is on the south campus. That south campus has, is, is been sold. And then the state contracted back with, with the provider to have these families in there since November of '22. I was one of those families, mostly Haitian, Haitian Creole. But that, that contract is up at the end of June. And so that, that, that property has to be delivered free and clear of, of people. And so right now, the, the state, Salem is working with the state through the mayor's office, is leading on what they call demobilizing. In other words, moving these families into housing. Some have been housed, some have been moved into, frankly, the Holiday Inn in Peabody. Some are, are being, some have, they have found homes for some in Lynn, in Salem. And I want to say that maybe 45 families have been placed either in a variety of those scenarios and continuing to place the remainder of the families. and continuing to place the remainder of the families because the property has to be free and clear. So, and so, but I, I raised that because it gives us really a snapshot of what this is going to look like as we really start to push to house families. When I first got into the Senate in 2013, we were, motels and hotels were filled with homeless families from one end of the Commonwealth to the other. Very expensive, terrible for families. And especially children. And I think the, the Patrick administration worked hard to turn that needle. And then the Baker administration, when they came on board, really, really turned that needle. And we got that down to under a hundred families across. So, you know, I think it was one motel in like middle Massachusetts where we were, we were housing families at the time. So it's, it's stressful to see us go the other way again, but we don't have a choice. These are families who are here with documentation and as we know. And we're going to do our best to, to house them. You are doing your best to educate, and we are so very grateful. We have these weekly meetings with Dan, for the Danvers and PBD hotels and motels. And it's very helpful, I think, on both sides. It helps us all hear it at the same time. What's the impact on you as a, as a community and as a school system? And we know that it, it's an impact and that you need these reimbursements on time, that you need these transportation costs on time. And that's what we keep, that's what I'm telling the Ways and Means Chair. And he's hearing it. We also know that your ESER funding's running out in 2024. So I, I assume that you're, the bulk budget you've built, which I have this, so you actually printed it off. And I read the executive summary. Thank you very much. It was really excellent.
Thank you.
And so, you know, you, you have to build those, because you've created those positions out of need. And now you want to continue to fund them without the funding that is, is, is no longer there. Back to the Circuit Breaker, the, the Chair, you know, in the Senate, and I'm sure it's in the House. He took, the Senate Chair speaks fondly of the House Chair. They, they have a really, a very strong relationship, and they're really trying to get to the same points. And so.
I think yours is more forthcoming than mine.
Maybe.
Maybe. Less detail on my side.
Maybe. But, but on the Senate side, there's, the, the effort is to fully fund Circuit Breaker so that, you know, we haven't always done that, but we did in this fiscal year and continue to move, go, do that going forward. And we do have the Fair Share Amendment dollars and the Student Opportunity Act dollars where we've made those commitments and the, and the voters have made those commitments. So we'll continue in that way as well. We know what you're up against. We, we hear you. We're so grateful that you're so involved in telling us what the needs are so we can communicate that back and make sure that that, that happens. Both of us are very aligned and talk to our respective leadership often. We're not, we're, we're not shrinking violet's when it comes to, to the ask and to just make sure. And they already know. They're hearing it from all the members across the House and Senate. So even though the Senate's budget for FY25 is going to be, you know, built on dollars that are three hundred million dollars less, the Chair is still feeling confident that Chapter 70 will be fully funded, not going to take it away from the schools, not going to touch UGA and any of our local aid because you rely heavily on it. And, you know, which, that's, the, the promise is there to make sure that that, that happens. That's what I was told. And so we're just going to, you know, continue to shoulder together and make sure that that message is just consistent. And, and again, they're hearing it, we're talking about it, and we're building our budgets accordingly to, to make that happen. And just say thank you for, you're absolutely right. There should be other communities that aren't facing these financial hardships. And, you know, it's, it's difficult on the school system. It's difficult on the community. Danvers has stepped up in, you know, during the, the past crisis with homeless families. And you're stepping up again. And, but there's only so much that you can do and that, that you're working with. And we recognize that as well. So that is, that's a really novel idea that other communities that don't have these impacts, that frankly, they don't have a motel or a hotel in their district, so they're not impacted.
But they all, but the, but the revenues do, you know, there is that.
Yes.
The, the, the budget is, you know, distributed. So it's not as though if you, if you're not educating children through this program, you're not contributing. But you're not, you're not contributing as much as we are in the other eighty-nine communities.
It's the impact. Yeah. It's a, it's a big, it's a big impact. And it's recognized. And, but for the motels, you know, other communities don't, aren't facing the same issues.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of staring at, just keeping on the budget. In regards to the new like wealth tax that was supposed to bring an estimated billion dollars a year, is there any accounting of where that money's going? And is there any consideration of towns like Danvers that are taking on additional burden to maybe get priority in regards to funding due to, and I don't know if that's part of the shortfall. But, I mean, I looked at it. It was an estimate of a billion dollars a year. But I don't think there's any visibility into where it's, you know, I think it's infrastructure, transportation and education. I'm just wondering if there's any way of creating like a priority for towns like Danvers that are taking on, you know, a larger burden than others.
Well, I mean, that's been a conversation that's ongoing, like from the get-go. Like, can we get some extra consideration? I had put in a budget amendment in the sub-budget when we did another seven hundred and eighty-five million dollars to kind of keep everything going. And that, that funding will be very carefully watched by advocates who led the fight for the Fair Share Amendment, our friends in the MTA and the, and the MFT. And I think SEIU. So there'll be no shortage of accounting and kind of accountability on that. In terms of how can we get special recognition? You know, the Secretary Riley said an interesting thing at the Ways and Means hearing in Greenfield. He said, you know, people say, oh, what do you do? What are you supposed to do when you have this sudden influx of, you know, of, of students unannounced, on a, you know, on a moment's notice? And he said, well, in Lawrence, we call that Tuesday. And I, I think what his point was, a lot of communities have been doing a lot of this for a long time. And it is our second time at it. And it's the massive influx. It's the volume in a short period that makes it so, I think you would agree, Dan, that that's what makes it so hard. We want to be welcoming. We want to do the right thing. And that it has to be managed. And it's a resource conversation for sure.
Can I just rephrase, rephrase the question? It's not so much about the emergency assistance. I'm, the question is more about like overall.
Like where is the money?
Where, yeah, where is that? Let's take the emergency assistance out of it.
Yeah, that'll come out when they.
How is that made more visible? And how can we? Just speaking as a whole, I'm just really curious.
Yeah. You know what? I didn't bring my budget book in with me.
And that's okay, but that'd be a great like thing to.
It's in the governor's budget. Like if you wanted to go online and you read the, the narrative, they explain. And now we might, we'll tweak that. We might do it a little bit differently. I'd do it very differently. But yeah, that, that is going to be very plain for everybody to see.
Because I only ask if like the budget, you know, you guys are talking about the budget shortfall, collections are down. But I know this is supposed to be separate. And I'm wondering how that's being used overall to help the districts.
Don't worry. I guarantee you. It's going to be, it's going to be very easy to see, Gabe. But, and I'm happy to, to take it offline with you and kind of go through the governor's narrative and so forth.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. I did want to mention, I didn't mention the work permit situation, which is a source of, a modest source of hope or a source of a modest amount of hope. Because as more people become eligible for work, and I know that was the case in Salem. Salem Hospital is fully staffed for the first time in.
Pre-pandemic.
Pre-pandemic. And that's because of this source of, of workforce. So that's a positive. Anyone else?
Hello. Thank, thank you both for being here. I guess it's, it's sort of a statement more necessarily than a question. You've talked about, I think, and I believe you, and so you understand the pressures that are on municipalities now. And in terms of what we are trying to accomplish. You've also, I think, both expressed generally that, not just in Danvers, but in the other districts that you represent, you see a need, for example, to increase compensation to aides. And we all recognize more that they're doing in the classroom. It's all true. In a town like Danvers, we happen to have pretty much every union up for renegotiation. And they are coming off of, as individuals, years with, you know, pretty high inflation. Prop two and a half doesn't really allow towns to keep up with that. So you mentioned the, the rainy day fund, which seems to have a substantial amount of money in it. I'm inclined to share the message with you. It's raining. The things that we need to do and the various pressures all coming together at once on municipal budgets. And I'm sure you both know, Danvers, at this point, we're pretty much taxing to our levy limit. There's really no room for us to raise additional revenue. Only for this, you know, feasible way to raise additional revenue. And I imagine other towns and cities are in similar situations. So this is an unusual sort of coming together. It's almost like the perfect storm because of the effects of inflation and COVID and more student needs based on mental health issues. More needs in the Commonwealth in terms of mental health issues generally. A hospital system that's being negatively impacted by the Stewart problem. All of these things. And I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And I recognize the pressures on both of you as well and the legislature. But yeah, it really is raining. And I think if there was ever a time to maybe raid the rainy day fund to help the communities of Massachusetts, now might be it.
So you know what? I thank you for raising it. It's been, we have been talking about that. And I'd like to dig in a little more because who determines if it's raining or not? Is the, are the bond rating companies? Because, because when we take money from that, it affects our bond rating depending on what the use is. So that, so it really does have to be pretty dire. But I would agree with you. I, I, I mentioned it too. I think it's raining with our, with our, you know, all of our migrants and the costs of, of maintaining even shelter, you know, in motels. And, but I agree. Education is an area that we can't see go backwards. It just, it's, it's just not possible, just because you know, as of the needs of, of our student population today. It's, it's, you know it, right? With all the mental health issues. And I've got a little granddaughter who's, you know, three and a half. And she'll be in school before we know it, and she's in preschool. But I, I, I look the same thing. I go, wow, what is, what's coming for her? You know, and then her, her little brother behind her, you know, so. But let me raise that with, with Ways and Means and, and with A and F to say, okay, how much does it have to be raining? I mean, we do. It's historically high. When we, you know, when, when the pandemic hit, we were just north of four billion dollars. And we took about a little less than half of that to be able to keep government running. But now, I mean, now we're double that, more than double. Because we were, we, we, we had all of this revenue come into the Commonwealth. For, I don't know if anybody saw on the record yesterday. The Chair of Ways and Means was on, on the record on Channel Five yesterday at eleven AM. And I watched it. And he had a great explanation. We had four hundred billion dollars come into Massachusetts alone. Whether it came into schools by, with ARPA, ESER, whether it came, went to businesses and the PPP, whether it came right to the Commonwealth. And four hundred billion dollars to spur the economy, right? Keep us running. And, and it worked, right?
It was bipartisan infrastructure law.
What's that?
That was the bipartisan infrastructure law.
And, and what did it, what did it do? It spurred spending and people spent and businesses grew. Now businesses, they've, they've grown so much, now they can't find more workers, you know. Again, you know, I think of the pandemic was, you saw it, teachers retired, medical personnel retired. I digress. But, you know, so, and then we were able to really build that rainy day fund. That's where those dollars came from. We, we socked them away and said, you know what? And, but now we're at eight, eight point four billion dollars, enormous amount, fifteen percent of our budget. And so, you know, can we now tap into that safely? And, and not harm our, our bond rating. And so we will, we'll peel that back. So I'm glad you raised it. Thanks.
I mean, I don't for a minute want to overlook that the federal government doesn't seem to be able to get out of its own way to get some of this important things done. But, you know, I feel like just following the news and seeing the pockets of problems out there, whether it's in healthcare, mental health, education, housing, people's. We are sort of at a crisis point and an inflection point. And I know it's not easy and no one could suggest that, you know, any, you two aren't going to be able to solve it. We aren't going to be able to solve it. But as a, as a community and as a state, as a country, we've got to work towards solving it. And, you know, that'd be my expression. I feel like we are approaching a crisis point right now, that anything you can do to help would be appreciated.
Thank you. Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know that both of you always advocate and represent the community really well. So I appreciate every time that you come here with information and we get to ask questions. But I think we all probably echo many of the same sentiments. And you're always updating.
Is it okay if I just add something?
And you always update too, because I know you talk.
Try. And we do appreciate your advocacy and seriously, phone call, text away. But certainly, you know, the things that really, you know, we know that we're struggling with is that, you know, the Chapter 70 funding, the formula itself is complicated. Knowing that, you know, there's a cap at a four point, four point five percent. And we know inflation was over that a couple of years ago. And it's, we come down low, which is great. But there's that lag behind to catch up. And I think we're really feeling that. We're all feeling that piece. You know, we, we do have foundational budget this year, which is a, is a little bit above. But certainly, you know, one point four million, I think one point four million less just because of that inflation change, which is all great. It's changed. So that really is impacted, I know, just not Danvers, but other communities. So anything you can do in that area, just to take a look at that. Again, the number of, the rate is much lower than this calculation. But it's like that lag behind, I think is important. And I know all superintendents are asking, and I know Sally's heard me say this ad nauseam, but we're all trying to plan for next year, obviously. And part of that Chapter 70 is our accounting for students at the October one census. And we, you know, we had students arrive after that. So we are very close in a bracket to move. You know, again, it is what it is. And just hoping, you know, as much as we can project out so we can plan for the future. Fortunately, whatever we do not use in that fund, we can roll over for next year. But again, thank you for keeping the timeliness of the installments coming in because we count on that to take care of transportation bills especially. So anything you can advocate for that piece, we really appreciate that. Because knowing October one is a key date. So if those numbers change, it's helpful for us.
Thank you.
We will continue to harp on that.
But we appreciate everything you do. And I know you all are on the front lines with us too. So we do appreciate you.
And you're on the front lines of, you know, in the classrooms, on the playground every single day. So thank you for making sure that when children are here, when they're at school in Danvers, they are good. They are being cared for. They're being educated. So thank you for that.
I can't accept thanks for that, except our team does outstanding work, as you know.
They do.
If you ever want to tour any of the buildings, let me know. We're happy to provide that. Just come around to the buildings because you would see that every day in and out.
You can even be a guest reader.
Well, I was just going to say, I was invited to Highlands.
They'll let you in anytime again.
Yep. And I went into Ms. Boudreaux, Mrs. Boudreaux and.
Oh, yeah.
And my former paper girl neighbor, little Becky McDonald, who is now Mrs.
I forget.
She teaches fifth grade at Highlands, yes. And it was wonderful. And I saw that they're having Arbor Day. And depending on my schedule, I might swing by. But always a delight to come to any, to any school. Yes.
Yep. Put me on the list for guest reader too.
Okay. Careful what you ask for.
Oh, it's fun.
It's awesome.
They read with you. It's so fun.
It is fun. A twist scientist was my book. It was really fun. All right. We're good? Thank you. I hope we didn't take too much time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Always great to see all of you. And thanks for your great work.
Thank you.
Just a quick question for the Chair. I know, I believe we have a, you know, as we do. I know, I believe we have, you know, as we do our committee updates towards the end of the meeting, we have a very important interview and a couple of items. I know we have representative from CPAC, I don't know if
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Provide maybe an update now, and then we can move into proceedings, that's okay with the Chair and the committee? I know.
I apologize you had to wait, I would have had you up after public comment.
Give me a chance to, you know, button all this up. Instead of my chicken scratch over here, so no, I appreciate it, thank you, you know, for the time, for allowing CPAC to come up here and just give an announcement on how things are going right now. So I just, first of all, wanted to really thank you Superintendent Bauer for allowing us to host the forum that we did, I think it was, it was exactly what our families needed, and I appreciate that very much. And so CPAC wanted to just thank you for, for, for that evening and allowing parents to ask questions. It went very well, we got a lot of positive feedback. Also, we hosted our first 2024 event this Saturday, it was amazing. We had such a great turnout, we had a treasure hunt in the library, we had over 60 children show up. And we had an amazing opportunity to meet so many new families, so many new parents interested in CPAC, didn't even know we existed. So it was really a great opportunity, and we really had a good collaboration with the library. They helped us put it on, they helped us set everything up, so it was really, we just wanted to take this time to really let you guys know that they were in amazing collaboration, working with them, and it, it really, it was a great turnout. So I do want to thank the library for that specifically, because they did a lot of help, a lot of work to make that event very successful. And a lot of happy kids going home with a lot of really cool gems. Everybody loved them, it was, it was a really great idea, so I did just want to kind of share that. Also, we did want to mention, because the whole point of that was to let the community know that we're here, we exist, but we need help. We need more help, so just using this opportunity to let everybody know that voting will be on May 1st for board positions for CPAC. And it will be in person, and all the details of that will be sent out soon. So to kind of keep an eye out on the emails that go out through Superintendent Bauer each week, and we have a little blurb that we're always updating. So keep an eye out on when, where, for the time on that, so more to come. Also, we have open opportunities that is ongoing throughout the year, throughout the school year, for different opportunities for parents to get involved in CPAC with different types of roles that are non-board member, non-committal. So I also wanted to take the chance to, you know, just thank you guys again for allowing us to come up here, speak, give you guys a face of CPAC, and, you know, the community watching at home, and we really do look forward to working with the new Director of Student Services. And I can't wait to meet the new candidates. Thank you guys so much, you guys have any questions for CPAC?
I just want to thank you, you, I know that a lot of CPAC members came, or board members came to the Select Board Budget Hearing. So that was really appreciated, and I think that it was really important for the Select Board to hear firsthand also, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
As far as us allowing you to do, you know what, thank you for doing it, it makes a big difference in the lives of official ed parents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate everything that you guys are doing, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, thank you to CPAC.
Yes, have a great night.
Yep. Okay, all right, let's transition into the finalist interview for the Director of Student Services. So this process itself began earlier with a first round screen. Mr. Crane participated in that, we had various stakeholders, we had a CPAC representative, we had parents, we had staff, we had one of our teaching assistants on there, and it was, it was a great group. And we started off with 14 that applied, and we were able to whittle that down to bring three finalists from that screening to the next round, the second round, which is the big one. So I just want to thank the screening committee for their hard work on that, and thank you, Mr. Crane, for that, it was a, it was a great process. And I got to give credit to Mary Warmers, she chaired the committee, and along with our HR manager, Kim Bevins, for all the processes for consistency. That was really important, and Mary did a great job with that. The second round was much more comprehensive, where there were interviews with a smaller group of our administrative team. And then we used a lot of feedback opportunities where we had a forum with our staff. So each candidate had 20, 15, 20 minutes to, you know, talk about the things they would bring into the director role. From there, we gathered feedback, things that were positive and things that the candidate would need to work on or challenges. And we had them meet with our administrative council, which comprises of our assistant principals, principals, directors, and the whole group, follow that same suit, feedback from them, and then again, partnered with CPAC for a collaborative family forum, which was outstanding, a great opportunity for families to meet our candidates. And I did note that a few teachers tuned in there, that tuned in as staff, so you had an opportunity to hear, you know, twice from that. And we took feedback, we offered Google Forms, and I did share with you in your folder all the feedback from Ms. Ryan, both of the positives and the constructive part, because I thought it was important that you saw that. We used that quite a bit throughout our analysis, because ultimately, after that, we had the interviews, we had all those forums, and then it was really up to us to move forward to you, our recommended finalists, because this is a school committee hire. So we wanted to do all of our due diligence, and knowing that time is of the essence, because there are other communities looking for director positions, and certainly knowing that we're going through a lot of transition, and really feel very, very, you know, confident that the process was fair, and certainly very thorough. On top of that, we did reference calls and reference checks, and then Mary and myself had meetings Friday morning, just to vet through just some final touches. So it gives me great pleasure to bring forward to the school committee for recommendation as our finalist, Ms. Christina Ryan. And she's currently the Assistant Director of Student Services for Andover Public Schools. So she oversees special education programming for the district. She has a number of different roles in her background that really provides, we think, all the pieces necessary to be a successful director of student services. Again, we're very pleased that she is here and is finalist, so we'd like to bring her up to begin the interview. And she's in the audience, I said I'd give her a water. Right, have a seat.
Hi, everyone, nice to meet you.
Hi, welcome.
Nice to see you, Christina.
Yes, nice to see you again, Mr. Crane.
So we each have a question for you, I just didn't order our last names how we said. But the questions also are there, so we'll ask, and then there might be like a follow-up question, or something you, you know, you want to add to. But I don't know if you want to first start with like a little, I know Superintendent Bauer gave us a little intro, but if you have anything you want to add to, to that.
Sure, I would just say that my entire career has been spent in education. So I spent the majority of my career working with students from pre-K through 8th grade, and prior to coming to Andover, that was what I loved doing. I came to Andover specifically because I didn't have any high school experience, and I thought budgeting high school and really looking at creative programming for students in high school and beyond was really critical before becoming a director. So now, having that experience, I feel very able, willing, and ready for this new chapter.
Thank you. So I will start first, what do you see as the most important area of development for special education, and how will you approach this situation?
I think the most important area of development is always the same, building and sustaining programs for the students in front of us. So I think often, directors come and go, and they build programs to meet the needs of students currently in front of them. But you have to continuously monitor and provide continuous training for staff, because the population of students changes every single year. And so a program has to fit the students in front of you, and we have to be creative in how we are using resources to make sure that we're able to sustain programming for the students that we serve.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you for joining us. Please provide an overview of your professional experiences, describing the experiences that you feel have prepared you for success in this role, and have helped to craft your vision for special education.
I have been very fortunate that I have worked in a variety of different towns that have all had very similar challenges regarding special education, but have been different based on the students that we serve. So I would say that I think the most important, my vision is for students to be able to remain in their home schools, to be able to get the education that they deserve. Depending on what's currently happening in the climate, that isn't always available for a variety of reasons. But I think it should be our overall goal to be able to serve the students of Danvers. And so what that means is students should not have to leave to attend schools outside the district unless for some very specific reasons. And I think too often, we get in the mindset of, oh, well, this school might do things differently, or this school is better. And in my experience, that's not the case. And I think it's really important for educators, who are the ones delivering services day in and day out, to be able to see what educational opportunities exist outside of the public school setting. Because I do think there is this piece of someone else is doing it better than I am. Unfortunately, I've been able to take some of my educators into some of our out-of-district placements to be able to see what is so great here, and then tell me how we can use what we've learned and bring that back to our town. And nine times out of 10, people will say, they're not doing anything differently, they just have more staff. Well, that's a problem I can solve, I can get more staff, but I need you to see that you are just as skilled and competent as the people in these programs, and really getting our staff the training to feel that way, to be able to deliver those messages to families. Because I think if you're a teacher or a service provider, and you're not confident in what you're doing, that's coming across to the families that you serve. Thank you.
All right, I have the next question. And could you, Christina, provide an example of your direct work with a special education student, and why this interaction was important to you?
This is what I do every day, so I would say today's example would be, a parent called me and said, I'm really unhappy with my child's current program, and it's a program that's an out-of-district program. And so I said, great, come in, meet with me, and can you bring your student, I really want to talk with said student. And so the parent and student came in, and they really told, talked to me about how they feel like their student is being discriminated against at said school, and they want their student to be able to come back to district. And so we talked about it, I called said school, I set up a Zoom interview with 15 minutes, I said, we have to talk about this, how are we going to make sure that this problem is resolved? And at the end of the meeting, I said to the family, you get to make the ultimate decision, but what are you confident in doing? And they said, I want to come back to district, so help us come back. And so I dropped everything I was doing today and said, okay, we're going to figure this out together. And I had my high school staff come over, and we really talked about what was going to be the best fit, and making sure that the family felt great by the time they left. And the student, you know, shook my hand and said, thank you, this is all I wanted, I wanted someone to hear me.
Excellent, thank you.
So why, sorry, why is this important to me? Feel free, feel free to stop me and ask me follow-up questions, I can be a little succinct. But why is this important to me? Because we are for students. And I think oftentimes, we have a vision in our mind of what that means, but until we're actually talking with students, we don't necessarily always know.
Hi, Christina, nice to meet you.
You too.
I have, my question has quite a bit of setup here, but I'm gonna help.
I know it's lengthy.
The train leaves California.
So thinking about inclusionary practices, teachers are expected to develop meaningful differentiated learning experiences for a full range of students in their classrooms. For example, students with IEPs, English learners, average, self-motivated, quiet, high performers, et cetera. How will you know if a teacher is reaching all students, and how will you support a teacher who is struggling with this?
That's a great question. So I think the first thing I would want to do is be in classrooms. And so I think it's really important not only to establish relationships with families, but to be present in schools. And so oftentimes, it's very easy to be answering emails and taking care of other things that have to be done, but I need to be in classrooms, and I need to see what teachers are doing, and I need to be meeting with school-based teams to really look at what the data is showing us. So is the data showing that there are certain teachers who are really struggling with something? If so, I'd love to spend time in those classrooms and really talk to those teachers about what's working, what isn't working. Because oftentimes, when you meet with teachers, they will be honest and say to you, I don't feel prepared to do this, and here's why. And so if I know what the why is, then I'm happy to try to figure out a way to get some additional assistance. So is it a curriculum issue, is it this one particular student I don't know what to do with, or how can I really help support that work? And if it's not me, who is better served than me to be able to partner with this work? So oftentimes, you know, I will hear teachers say to me, I want to be doing this, but there's only one of me, and I need to have five different groups running at one time, and how am I going to be doing this? So to me, that's an easy problem to solve, because we just need to get together as a group and talk about it. So what does the curriculum look like, who's available during those times, and how do we really use the master schedule and our resources to effectively deliver instruction for students?
Thank you.
Hi. Just, I mean, some of the things I've read about you, fiscally responsible, incredible evaluator, and creative, and I'm wondering, you know, just thinking about that, how would you manage the budgetary aspects of this position, setting priorities, and being strategic with hiring? Deploying contracted services, et cetera, and if you could share an example of where you had to be, you know, creative?
Sure, every day. But I would say what happens every year is the budget is prepared, and it's a wish list, and so we really want everything on our wish list, but we don't always get it. So then I really think it's my mission to go through the rest of the year, figuring out if that wish is really so important, how can I better utilize resources more effectively? So, for example, we have a current program in our district where we're short on teaching assistants. We cannot hire or retain positions. So what I said to one of my staff was, I said, okay, then we need to think about a different way of doing this. If we really need people who have experience with behavior training, instead of being short-staffed, or thinking we're short-staffed, 11 assistants, how could I potentially utilize those positions to hire BCBA's instead? So those people are more skilled, but how can I use that as my defense to maybe think about a different model that we haven't thought of before? Because some people are really ingrained, and this is how the model has always been, so every student needs a one-to-one if they're in this classroom. Well, that doesn't have to be the case, so how can we creatively think about different ways to utilize our resources that might end up costing the same amount of money, but might service more students?
Thank you.
Does anyone have any follow-up?
I just appreciate how succinct she is. I don't think, I love it, it's refreshing.
I just had a question that maybe think as you were speaking, so we've been working a lot on actual, like, co-teaching with Fidelity. So if you could talk a little bit about, like, your experience with that, I don't know if she got, I don't know if you got, probably not got to see any of it, right?
What's that?
Co-teaching, right, I don't, when she visited here, Ms. Ryan didn't, right?
She didn't have an opportunity, she discussed it, and it did come up.
Okay.
I would love to talk about that. So what we did in my current district is we really looked at our high school graduation rates, and I apologize to those of you who maybe heard this story before in another round, but what we noticed was, there was a subgroup of students who weren't graduating from high school, they weren't passing the MCAS. And when we really looked at that population of students, we were able to map their educational career and realize that at some point in time, someone made a decision to remove them from the general education setting. And in so doing, essentially changed their educational trajectory. So we had students who had been not receiving the same content for years and years and years. And so by the time they entered high school, they weren't in the classes they would have need to have been in to be able to pass those grade-specific MCAS tests. And so when we looked back in time and really figured out who made that decision and where, we were able to create a visual. And then we, there were several of us who worked on this project, but we went back and we met with each building-based team, starting at the elementary school, and said, you had these students, and many of our teachers were still there, similar to Danvers in the fact that people remain here for quite some time. And we were able to show who made that decision, what happened, and how it was impacting graduation rates. People were astounded, but cared, and said, we're going to do better, and we are, we're doing better. And so what we did was, we said, then we have to stop this. So typically, when you talk about co-teaching, you talk about it at the younger grade levels, and we said, we're going to do it at grade nine, because we have to stop what's happening right here, right now. And so what we did was, we said, what staffing patterns do we need? How are we going to repurpose potentially instructional assistance to hire more special educators, to have a ninth-grade academy? And we made sure that every single content area class was co-taught. We hired a consultant to come in during the summer and to provide staff training, and then we had that continuous training throughout the school year during our professional development days. And we also had observation coaching sessions. So the consultant, along with the district administrator and a program coordinator, so if it was science, probably me and the science coordinator, would have observed that class together, attended the feedback session, and really talked about what was working, what didn't work, and then how we were going to do better. So we finished that this year, and the results have been astounding, and people are so passionate about it that we all, even with our current budget crisis, figured out a way to sustain the model for ninth grade and for 10th grade. And so it's been hugely successful as far as giving kids what they need in the least restrictive setting, and helping take a high school setting and make it more small and manageable for our students who are struggling to learn.
Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up.
Yes.
Christina, one of the things that we are really committed to as a district is trying to find ways to develop programming that keeps students in district, I think you alluded to this maybe in your first answer. Do you have any? Do you have an example of a program that you started, or that was started under your, under your watch, so to speak, that actually had some success? Can you give us some details on what that was, and how that worked for your school?
Sure. So we have an autism program that spans pre-K through high school. And so, we were losing students to out-of-district replacements for that population. And so what we did was, we went and we had someone come in and audit our programs, and really meet with our staff to talk about what the missing components were. While we were doing that, several of us went and met and observed the out-of-district programs where our students were currently attending, to do the same thing I alluded to earlier, which was, what is so great? How can we do this and do it better? And so we were able to do that, and we created a mirror match program. That program is now really up and running. And every year, it's a new dance, as far as, okay, the students have changed, do we need to keep the same staffing patterns? What's working, what isn't working? And how are we making sure that when students are exiting our preschool program, that they can receive the same level of programming at one of our elementary schools? And so that's just something that I do every day, all the time. Because as students are exiting pre-K, it's a big deal about where are they going to go to kindergarten? What is their cohort going to look like? And the learning cohort matters. And so that's the piece that we find when we lose students to out-of-district replacements is, is there a cohort of like learners? And so that is always key, because students learn when they are grouped with other students with similar abilities. And so, when we don't have that, then that's unfortunately when students tend to leave the district. I would say the other piece of the puzzle is really thinking about social emotional learning. And, you know, every district, every district has students who are hospitalized, and are returning back from hospitalizations. And so, how are we able to have students re-enter in a safe and supportive way, while accessing their education at a level that feels manageable for them? And that's something that I think that we're all going to have to be on the forefront of, is how to have that programming, especially for middle and high school students.
Okay, thank you. Just one, one last question for me.
Ask as many as you want.
Okay. Obviously, through the process, you've learned a lot, a lot about our district.
Yes.
And, just curious, what you've found as far as the biggest, the two, one or two biggest priorities right now, that, two biggest holes that you need to fill right, right away?
I would say it was very clear to me that, no matter which group that I was speaking with, vertical alignment of special education programs is key. So making sure that whatever program is working continues for the length and duration of a student's career. And I would say the second piece that really came up was really making sure that we have qualified staff. So how are we hiring, training, and continuing to employ the best and the brightest?
Thank you. This might be the last question.
Was I supposed to, I, was there a part two?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Well, I'm assuming you're familiar with the ambitious goals that we have for special education within the district.
Yes, that's what drew me to the district, yes.
Could you paint a picture of what, maybe your first, let me rephrase. How confident are you on your impact? And how soon could we expect to see some, you know, outcomes that you can share, based on your experience and what you know about our situation? Like, even if you have to speak ambitiously about it, would love to hear about how quickly you think you can have an impact on our program.
So I would say, my first goal would be to come in and start meeting with people immediately. So I've got to figure out, what are the needs? Look at the data and compare the data to how, what people's emotional reaction is. So as I'm meeting with building leaders, do they, do they have their pulse on what's happening in their building? As I'm meeting with parents, are the stars aligning? What does that data look like? And then I really think it's about developing goals for the first year, and how I'm progress monitoring myself and my department towards those goals, and am I meeting them? And if I'm not on target to meeting them, then what do I need to shift and change to make sure that I am?
Okay, so.
As far as giving you a timeline?
Yeah.
That's, that's.
I'd love to hear more about like a 30, 60, 90, like.
30, 60, 90, okay, so within 30.
But not, not all of it right now, but like.
Yes, absolutely.
But, long story short, I mean, ambitious goals, high visibility.
Yes.
Do you think it's going to take you six months, or, like, from day one when you walk in, obviously, assuming you're going to want to speak to everyone, you don't want to understand what makes everyone work, what's working, what's not working? How long before you start to implement you, in your experience, and put your stamp on what we're trying to do here?
I would say 30 days. Thinking I'm starting July 1st, summer vacation, and so it's going to be hard for maybe me to meet with everybody, or have people come in and meet with me, but I would say 30 days. Because I can't wait too long, we're going to have to be planning what professional development's going to be looking like, we're going to have to be talking about the master schedule. So really, it's July and August, and we're up and running.
Thank you for that.
All right, any other follow-up questions? All right, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, it was nice to meet you.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Can I go walk Christina out? I'll be right back.
Yeah, so should we take a little recess?
You'll be in deliberation.
May I, chair, I'll make a motion before you walk Christina out. I'm going to move to appoint Christina Ryan as the Director of Student Services, contingent on successful contract negotiations, and that the superintendent would be appointed to negotiate on behalf of the school committee.
Second. Do you want him to repeat it?
I, I just have a question, I, I didn't realize we were going to be voting today at this exact moment.
You do have to vote today, we can deliberate if you want to take a short recess.
Yes, I do want to take a short recess.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll do that first, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, D.C., we'll take a little bit of a recess. Thank you.
We are back on, deliberated. Mr. Crane, I don't know if you want to make the motion again?
Well, we have a motion on the table.
Okay.
And we have a second.
Okay.
It would be an appropriate time for discussion.
Okay, so discussion. Anyone want to start, comment?
I'd just say it looks like a good find. Very impressed, confident, articulate, concise.
Okay.
I would, I would say the same. I think Christina presented herself very well, and obviously, the feedback that we got throughout the interview process was very strong. And she articulated all of her answers well, so, yeah, I have no reservations.
I had the pleasure of meeting her through the screening committee. Screening committee was extremely impressed. She came across, similar to what Josh found, very, I think straightforward, I think she'll be transparent, I think that she'll be not afraid to have tough conversations if need be. And I suspect that she takes a little pride in being creative, too, in terms of programming. So I think Christina is, is eminently qualified and would be a good choice. The other thing is, I respect that Superintendent Bauer has brought her forward as his choice. And I think that, you know, not to, not to quote the Bill Parcells thing, but if we're asking you to cook the meal, you need to be able to pick the groceries. And, so I support that, in, because Christina is clearly qualified, and she's your choice, and I was impressed with her, so I'm all for it.
I appreciated hearing Ms. Ryan's take on her role and her vision. I think it's very much aligned with Mr. Bauer's vision, our vision as a school committee. I appreciated, it seems like it'll be an energy that's going to be brought to this division in our district, so I would support her appointment.
Yeah, I echo what the rest of the committee said. And I loved the story today, just about the interaction with the student, because I think that being in the classroom, getting to know the kids is really what has to happen for any program, or for any change, or growth to happen. And Mr. Crane, thank you for serving on the interview committee.
No.
You've been very busy.
It was a good, it was a good process, and I was, I think I got there after the initial screening.
Yes.
And I will tell you that the process that Mary, you know, organized, and with Kim Self, I think we had really good candidates in that group from which Christina stood out.
Okay. So all those in favor of appointing Christina Ryan as the Director of Student Services, pending a agreed contract? What was the last thing you said?
That we appointed, and will appoint Superintendent Bauer to negotiate the contract on behalf of the school committee.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So I'll oppose none.
Thank you very much.
So if Christina's watching, congratulations and welcome.
I'll send her a quick text, but thank you for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you. So we are still with the new business, and I know we didn't get to make it at the last meeting, the pre-K fee proposal, 24, 25.
Okay, we can go with that first, that's fine.
Yeah.
I didn't need the code.
Two nine one five.
Okay, thank you very much. Is it working? I see it back there. Great. Thank you. So, apologize, all right. So, the pre-K tuition recommendation, as you know, we went through a pre-K audit, lots of great things that we found in the audit. We do provide, we feel exceptional services by certified teachers in the area of special education. We have the facilities, we have an outstanding support staff, that you saw many of them tonight. And we offer specialized services, you know, everything from speech and language pathologist on to BCBA, physical therapist, occupational therapist. So it's really a wonderful model. And we've been looking at comparables with the surrounding communities, and knowing that our rate has not increased over 15 years. Currently, it's $15 a day for a half-day pre-K, $6 an hour. We know that our capacity, we have room to, to grow the program as well, and working with Bethany Stangus, who's the coordinator of pre-K, who presented the audit findings, and we know that we have a lot of ways that we can market and increase our enrollment, which would help greatly the program. So, we know that we currently have some slots as we speak for enrollment, knowing, moving forward as families are preparing to make pre-K plans, you know, it's so important that you make that transition from pre-K into K within your district, and I, we feel that the program that we have, there's a lot of room to grow. So we, just to break this down, just so you understand, we have a full day and a half-day model. The full day goes from 8:30 to 1:00. We, and that's really a small group, we say peer, because we have a mixture of students that are in an IEP and not. All the service available, then the half-day is where we have more people, that's a half, two and a half hours. And again, our numbers are 22 at the morning and 24, but we can go to 32 total. We have the capacity, and the learning centers are woven into all the program. Next year, Riverside will host all of the pre-K programming, that's part of our restructure. Having all of our resources under one roof makes sense, so the, not only the team can collaborate, but we can maximize resources. So we're undergoing planning for that. And our pre-K coordinators housed at the Riverside School, so there's a lot of good ingredients there. So right now, our current rate, as we speak, is $6 an hour for the half-day. And it's a little bit more on the, the half-day PM, because that is five days, so the annual rate for the AM half-day is $2,160. And for the full day, it's $4,890. So that's a little bit higher of a rate, but it's a smaller cohort. Again, these prices, we feel are, you know, certainly when we compare the other towns, and for what we offer, you know, we feel that we're due for an increase that will, will go into improving our programming even further. Excuse me, so we did our comparables with Beverly, Danvers, Hamilton went them through. It's really tough, because many of the programs have longer stays, shorter stays, there's so many variables, but I thought it was important to look at the hourly rate that we have, and really the, the strengths of where the programs are with an annual rate. So even right now, you can see where, although, you know, Beverly may have a little bit longer in their half-day, or overall annual's still lower, in terms of that. So through there, you could see that, you know, we have room to grow, and we really wanted to take a good, hard look at that, because when we take growth into account, we want to make sure that we're mindful of our families, certainly, we're Certainly, we're reasonable, but certainly for the product that they're receiving, we know that we can raise the rate and still be competitive with our comparables. So what we're looking to do is to bring our tuition rate up to eight dollars and fifty cents an hour, which would then increase our, you know, full year to an area that's relatively competitive. But still at a point where the revenue coming in can help support our programs and build further. But just also, please note that this is something that we need to review. I don't know why, maybe it's been reviewed in the past, but it needs to be part of our cycle. As our services improve, our enrollment improves, you know, I think we are planning to do some renovations in Riverside. We have that in plan to add two bathrooms and that's ready to go with DPW. And I did comparables, averaged out, the half-day tuition on all those schools is three thousand six hundred. We're still not even there with this increase, but I feel like, you know, it's a forty-one percent increase on the tuition. So I think you want to be mindful of what families and we're all, you know, times are tight, but at the end of the day, we provide a quality product. And even with this increase, we still feel like we have room to grow, but I think this is a good start. And so this increase helps support, though, we've been talking, you know, we need more professional development, aid training, curriculum development, so a lot of the money that we would capture in the increase can be utilized for those things that's not happening now, which feels important. So I think that's the last slide. This is frankly, I'm asking, requesting to consider for recommendation for approval, an increase of our pre-K tuition, eight dollars and fifty cents an hour across the board for our morning and afternoon, half-day programs and for a full day.
Okay, do you know the last time it was increased?
It was over fifteen years.
Everyone says this is the best kept secret in Danvers.
Been saying that.
We tried to be mindful in a way, too, because we know that we can capture, again, it's building the programming and being fair and equitable, but knowing that we have room. So part of it's on us to also market better than we have been, even an open house, getting a better online presence. And so, you know, digging deep into this, again, this is something that should be reviewed every year anyway. So we wanted to start here and feel this is a reasonable increase for next year.
And the only people who, families that would pay tuition would be those who are part of the pair program?
That's correct.
Right, because if you're, okay, if you're in for special education, it's free.
That's right, right? But there's also caveat, too, where some may not qualify and, you know, we can utilize free and reduced as an option if families do have an issue with that, which we did do that this year for the first time, but I understand. And it just made sense to us.
Questions, comments?
So looking at the hourly rate, then, this will put us more towards the top of the communities near us, around us, correct? So like Middleton, right now, is at the top.
Right.
At thirteen fifty, and then it would be us below it.
Correct.
Okay.
But also taking a look at that annual rate as we built in.
Yep.
So that's where it's a little different because of hours and days, but we feel that, you know, we're not, you know, we're a little bit below that yearly rate in terms of the half-day. We'll be above for the full day, but again, we have capacity to grow.
Some of these districts, too, that are on the lower end, you have to pay for kindergarten. Some of the districts that are the lower end for tuition for pre-K, they actually also have to pay for kindergarten, where our kindergarten's free.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right. So I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, got it.
That might be why they're a little bit low, I don't know.
Right, okay.
But to your, to your point, Alice, we were trying to be careful in that part and look like, where can we grow and add? So, you know, it is, it is an increase, but we feel it's reasonable within the, like you said, it's the best kept secret, but all the services that are available, too. And it's nice to, when the students are in pre-K, to make that transition to K in our district.
Yeah.
Goes a long way.
How does this compare, I've been out of the pre-K game for a while here, but how, how does this compare to like a private pre-K right now?
Well, first of all, you have certified teachers, right? There's a certification that's required. We do have the services that we offer, our OTPT and SLP services that are there as well. And we have the special education piece with integrated as well, if you have those needs.
How does this compare to cost also?
I didn't really do much of an analysis with some of the privates, but anecdotally, I've heard that we're, this is still lower.
It appears that way.
Yes.
Thank you.
We were just trying to see a local preschool, if they had any rates on their website.
But of course, they don't necessarily want the program.
But I think this stands up to the quality and I've had the opportunity to observe and see what's happening. And we have some great families that bring their children in and a lot of care and trust. And I think the staffing is good for what we need.
So I don't, it looks to me like this is about a, an increase of roughly thirty dollars a week for someone in the half-day program. That's a hundred and twenty dollars a month, give or take. On an hourly basis, it's a, I think it's a forty-one percent increase, looking at it.
It's a forty-one percent increase, yes.
I just worry about the families that are currently enrolled because students be, in pre-K, they can start at the age of three, correct? So they could be within pre, they could be within this program for two full years before they head into kindergarten. I just worry about the families that are in current enrollment, asking them to take that high of a percentage increase. I agree, and I've said this, it's the best kept secret.
Sure.
Because it's a cheap secret as well. So that is my only concern, are the current families. Knowing that they'll have two years of this, I still think it's more cost-effective and a better education for those students. But it is a big increase, I think, for some families.
Did we build this into our, into our budget expectations?
You know, roughly, we knew there'd be an increase, but it was kind of a fluctuating piece. Didn't have a specific figure to fall on, but yes. We anticipate we were going to raise, but certainly, you know, we needed a lot of analysis to look at where, and that's what goes hand in hand with the marketing piece, too, to expand. We have seats that are available. And we are considerably, you know, I believe we're considerably less than privates, too.
So Josh, just looking at a school, this was posted in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, so obviously it's not updated, but a private school in Danvers was one twenty-five per week, so it equaled forty. I know, it's old, so it's probably even more now. So it was four thousand two hundred and five dollars for the year, but that was three years ago. So I'm assuming it'd be higher now.
Yeah, and those, those have longer hours, then they won't dismiss at two o'clock or two-thirty. Those usually go till the end of the day.
No, this one is like actually like a program that it's like.
It's a nursery school, so it's not like a daycare program.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, yeah. So it has to be like two point, I know they get out by one, no, sorry, noon. You have to pay money if they need till one.
Okay.
Have you thought about like a tiered approach? Like this year will go up fifteen percent, then like gradually building to this forty-one percent increase? I do, I do think at the end of the day, getting to the eight dollars and fifty cents an hour is a good target. I just don't know doing it all at once with the families that are in the current program now, if that's fair to them, whether or not they could be grandfathered into it and it's new students, I don't know. But anything of those sorts kind of been explored?
Not, not as much, no. We looked at the, where we would fall, you know, mostly with the comparables and knowing that at the end of the day, yes, it's an increase, but trying to match the services that are provided to it, looking around more at the annual cost with the other communities, that was one that helped us. But, you know, certainly not opposed to going back and continuing to work on this and on this part.
It's hard because we haven't increased it in fifteen years. Obviously, it's reflective in the cost.
We all agree we need to.
We all agree we need to, I just think getting there, I just, I just want to raise concerns again. We don't know, if, some families might be like, okay, it's still money to spend and I could be making a big deal out of nothing. But I guess I'm just more thinking of those families who are expecting to pay more, a hundred and twenty dollars more a month.
Yeah, do we, um, do we make any accommodations for like income? If anyone is unable to afford the full rate?
So we did do that this year with, you know, it's almost in the same, there's not a formal policy, but that's something that we're definitely looking at because we're able to work on somebody that may qualify for free and reduced, just like you might do for a reduced fee like in athletics or other user fees. We did do that this year. There really wasn't a protocol for that with pre-K, but certainly understanding that piece, too, where we can take that into consideration.
I guess it's a multiple, like what would be the administrative lift? And if we were to do this, I mean, obviously, some families, the increase is the increase, but like some families can be able to absorb it and others would not. And I'm wondering if that would be a bridge?
We, you know, talking with, as we worked on this, that something that is in consideration to ensure that, you know, if families, you know, they need assistance, we're able to do that and work with them as partners, right? Didn't really want to go in there like, here's the fee, this is it.
Yeah.
But knowing that, keeping that in mind, right, because everybody's in a different place.
Right.
You know, and certainly it is a great deal and it's an awesome product. We have great educators that run these programs. However, just cognizant of the fact, too, like any increase, you know, you can't underestimate what that may do to a family budget. We respect that piece. And I'm happy to bring in more writing in this. It is a little timely because we need to start this process of marketing and getting it out. So, you know, if a decision's not made today, I would, I would strongly advise for our next meeting to be able to settle on that so we can get the marketing out. And I'm happy to come back with some more specific verbiage in that piece because I think that is important, that we're able to meet families where they are if necessary.
So maybe we, I'll move to table this until the April twenty-ninth meeting. With the provision and understanding that we will take a vote so that you can do whatever marketing you need to do.
Yeah, I would actually, because I just crunched these numbers and it looks like it's thirteen forty-four is the increase annually for a full day and nine hundred is a half-day increase. And I think it would, you know, while the hourly rate doesn't look that bad, going from six to eight fifty, I do think that some families will feel that sting. And I do like the, what Alice proposed, which more of a phased approach, going up to maybe seven fifty or eight, or eight dollars or something versus just the full amount. Because I think that, you know, a four hundred and fifty dollar increase, you know, would be an easier pill to swallow than a nine hundred dollar, you know, almost a thousand bucks.
Okay.
So that'd be my feedback.
So I'm happy to go back and bring to you a more detailed and a tiered approach as well as provisions for those that may need financial aid.
Thank you, and we will take a vote the twenty-ninth so we can advertise and get that going. All right, thank you.
We need to vote on the motion to table.
Who wants to, someone has to second it.
Oh, that's a good point.
Second.
All right, so all of us in favor, people until April twenty-ninth, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose none.
Okay, ready for the?
The restructuring.
Restructuring, all right. So as you know, our current model of student service leadership design, we're looking to restructure for various reasons. So the current structure is that we have a director that oversees coordinators at the elementary, the middle school and the high school. In addition, we have the administrative support at Central Office. We have one that supports our director in our district. We also have one that supports basically K through twenty-two. That's with updates on IEPs and coordinating, it's a lot. And then we have one that does the work, the business part of it, which is a huge piece with transportation and contracts. So our plan is really to streamline and allow building for future improvements. So what I'll present to you is a model that we can build upon, but I believe it's necessary for us to take steps forward. So our current model has our director, right, and it has our coordinators at the elementary, at the middle and the high school. We were not able to fill the coordinator at the middle school this year. We also have a preschool coordinator, and Unit A means they're in the teachers' union. And our district coordinator at the teachers' union level as well. We have school psychologists at the elementary level. And there is a difference in terms of how this model functions because the coordinators really have different roles. For example, the elementary coordinator, you know, has the five elementary schools, so it's really impossible for that person to do all the management of running the meetings and a lot of those operations. So the school psychologists take on a larger role at the elementaries, where at the middle and the high school, the coordinator's able to run the meetings, but does quite a bit of administrative assistant work. They're coordinating the meetings, all the paperwork with the IEPs, it's a lot. And again, our preschool coordinator's doing the work. Again, nothing wrong with being in Unit A, but, you know, there are times if directives are needed and such, they really have to utilize the director and go through that process of that and accountability as well for both. And right now, as I said, we have administrative assistants that works with the director supporting in our district, administrative assistant that does the financial piece and one that does K through twelve, really K through twenty-two. So that's our current model. But please note, you know, some of the reorganization items currently are that two of the coordinator positions were on ESAR. I'm only able to bring one across because we need to utilize our operational for the other special education positions as well as those supporting positions that we want to continue. Plus the clarity of the coordinator roles at each level. It's just, it's just different at the elementary and secondary because the middle and high school have the direct interface as opposed to the elementary that's spread out over the five schools. And again, I think it's important that the administrative team is comprised of the director, those that are underneath, as well as the coordinators, so that they're all in the administrative team. So that way they can provide directives as necessary, they can certainly have the accountability built in, and they have the ability to build that team. Administrative support, you know, question is, do we have enough support? And I really believe that our coordinators, you know, have added administrative assistant responsibilities. That really, it's a lot. So it's not, it's not a model that, you know, there's nothing wrong with the current model that we have, but I can see the problems that we have going forward in terms of coordinator positions and just being able to provide enough support. So the proposal that I do need approval for is because it will change the coordinator positions into assistant directors. It's really more of a streamlined approach and also looking, how can I make the change that can be in place next year that's as budget neutral as possible, knowing that we're really against the wall, you know, providing a lot of opportunities to grow our special education? That can certainly create that administrative team that we really need. So nothing changes with the director. The assistant directors essentially become, they're the coordinators that are morphed into an assistant director role. We are currently working on, you know, working on the job descriptions, not really much different for the K-five, but it will be different for the secondary. They will still work directly with the levels. So the assistant director will work just as they have been at the elementary levels with the school psychologists running most of the meetings and doing a lot of the work there at the building base. But that assistant director at the elementary will be interfacing on a regular basis with those elementary schools as they currently occurs. The difference is more on the secondary side, where that assistant director will be working with the middle and the high school. And that will change things in terms of the school psychologist roles at both those, where they will run the meetings and have more of a role similar to what's at the elementary. But they will have direct oversight, again, of that middle and the high school. And also looking to move the pre-K coordinator into an administrative role and out of Unit A as well as the out-of-district coordinator. And you can see the interface there is important, too, where the pre-K coordinator works directly with that elementary coordinator. And obviously, the director works with all of them. And on the other side, the secondary assistant director works directly with that out-of-district coordinator because there are a lot of transitions that occur there, although, you know, some occur at the elementary, but a lot more at the secondary as well. What I'm looking to do, too, and this is where the real puzzle gets to be, and we're not finalized yet, but I would like to expand the administrative support that is necessary, not for the one that would work with the director and the out-of-district and the financial with the admin assistant, that should stay the same. But my belief is that there's so much compliance that takes place with putting together the IEPs. There's so much compliance that's required to ensure items are collected for the meetings and the follow-up that, you know, we have a person that's doing an outstanding job, but really, I believe it really should be two people. And where, again, how do I do that within the current constraints? That's up to me to figure that out. We're working on that, whether that's through looking at our current staffing and seeing where we can, if there's a necessity to reallocate or finding ways to fund that. And I think that will really provide support. Also take pressure off the building levels because things will be different at the middle and high school with that piece. But I feel that's important, jump in and provide that support. And there's so much compliance that takes place with all that paperwork. It's just essential. Again, and this is something that ultimately would we'd like to get to more of a building based on top of this, of course. But that, that may take time, that will take time. But knowing where we're at right now, I think it's important to understand that, you know, the funding, how can we do this? You know, we're essentially consolidating from six to five, right? That assistant director position, we're changing the coordinator. That assistant director position, we're changing the coordinator to that piece. And that really provides, I think, an administrative team truly there that's so important. So they have autonomy in their leadership, the ability to give directives, they have accountability, which are all really important in that piece. And then looking how we can improve and increase administrative support that takes pressure off the buildings, uh, obviously more compliance safeguards. Yes, it's a change in the secondary model, there's no question, because they currently have somebody in place at the high school. Unfortunately, nobody at the middle school this year, just through tough circumstances. So that will increase the role of the school psychologist at each of those, that they'll facilitate the meetings. But again, that aligns closer to what's happening at the elementary level. So that, that is my request is really to approve the student services reorganization proposal. It allows to create the assistant director positions, uh, which replace the coordinators. Obviously then it moves the pre-K and out of district coordinators to, uh, an administrative contract and then allows me to research and work, how can we find administrative assistant support? So it's a lot, but I believe it's necessary at this time, uh, to do this. Um, and we've worked on this, this model. And I've shared it with, with not, obviously not every stakeholder, because time is of the essence too, so we can plan for next year so that we can make sure that our new director has the support they need, she needs to hit the ground running. So that's what I'm requesting now is approval for reorganization of special student services.
Two questions. For me.
Of course.
So under school psychologist for the current model, it says like a number like four and then one. But then for the re, the new proposal, like are they only going to have one at the elementary?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
No, the, the school psychology will remain the same.
Okay, so we're not, okay.
Yep, because the high school has one, the middle school and the number of the elementary they have, because they, they, they do have to share. And they have some at the building base too.
Okay. And then the other question is, because we would be moving, um, the out of district coordinator and then the preschool coordinator into Unit A, right?
Out of Unit.
I'm sorry, out of Unit A into Unit B.
Yes.
Would that affect on a union standpoint because we were moving people out of that union?
So I, I had a discussion and that, that is ongoing.
Okay.
But, you know, when you're going to this where it, it, it is a change, you know, it, it's necessary, I believe. Although some districts don't have it that way.
Well, we are negotiating too.
But, but yes, I mean, that's important, a point, and certainly, you know, that's a big move for a person that is Unit A to move out. And certainly I've been willing to work, you know, if I need to structure the contract, one that would, if there's any change to allow them security to be back in Unit A. I've done that before too.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Um, my recollection is that we went to the model with the three coordinators and forgive me whether it was last year or the year before. But the idea was that the, it would free up the school psychologists to have more direct impact on students who are coming back from COVID with greater mental health issues. Has that worked out? Has that not really worked out? I'm just curious as to the, because it's a, it's sort of a, this is back to what it looked like a couple of years ago when the school psychologist ran the team meetings.
Right, so they're currently doing that at the elementary. They just have to because there's five elementaries and one coordinator there.
Yep.
And I would say that, you know, the middle school, um, school psychologist this year without, in the absence of a coordinator is essentially doing that work.
Okay.
So yes, I mean, there is a little bit of a downside to this too, and I think that is part of, you know, the conundrum is, you know, currently where we're at, we just can't move across
Yeah.
those to keep the three coordinators, because that, you know, they did move one the year before, it was two years ago, I believe, that that model came into existence. It's not, it's, it's a good model.
Yeah.
But just right now where we're at, we can't sustain that.
Sure.
But yeah, it will impact that piece. Um, but we are also bringing other positions to support students too.
Okay.
So, but I can't negate the work of the school psychologist, you know, and would it be optimal to have something at all the building levels at some point? Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that's where I think that, that's why it's important to know that this is a snapshot moving forward for next year. But the opportunity is if we, if we were able to move in the right direction with special education, we're able to, as we said, flatten the curve, what can that look like to provide more supports at the building levels, then, then move forward? That, that, that was the thought process through this piece. And currently, you know, um, it, this has nothing to do with, unfortunately, you know, it does shift the high school, um, school psychologist, it, it does, just based upon the responsibilities. But they will still have that oversight of that assistant director working hand in hand. So there will be more meetings that they will run. It will change that, yes. But to speak to, you know, specifics on that, I mean, it, I mean, obviously there's an impact when you make a change like that.
Sure, yep. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, one, one question for me. Uh, just the only question that I have is, do we, do we feel it will be a bandwidth issue? Just having the assistant director cover both HRMS and DHS?
I mean, you know, certainly other models have, you know, but they may have more of a building base than they have an, one assistant director. You know, and I think that's why the, there has to be some shifts. So I think it's important that that admin assistant support is in there.
Yep.
We are bringing aboard a fellow next year of a school psychologist that can provide some relief for some evaluations. So we're always mindful of that as well. Um, I mean, that, it is a big job, no question about it. But also too, you know, elevating the, um, again, it, moving the director, the coordinator of out of district as well as pre-K gives them more autonomy as well.
Right.
So I think, you know, I'm looking for ways to take pressure off of that as you make this change so that bandwidth is in consideration.
Yep.
But I, I respect that very much because it's, these are all big jobs.
Sure.
No matter how it slices.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would have the same concern with, as Josh. I mean, I know how long the middle school has gone without a coordinator and then to continue with the recommendation of them not necessarily having someone solely devoted to the middle school. I would just raise that as, as a concern. I understand the admin, you know, hopefully pulling off some of the workload, but, how do we give families at the middle school or even those that are going into the middle school confidence to know that, you know, they'll have someone who won't be distracted, if you will, by the high school?
Right, and certainly we know that as much as the elementary is different than the middle, the middle is different than the high school. And being able to, you know, coordinate, that's important. So how that may, the day may look very different where today, you know, the coordinator at the high school is in there every single day. They may not be there every day. They may be there a couple of days and split that time between the buildings. That, that would be a necessity in order to do that. But certainly knowing where the areas of higher demand are too, being able to utilize that. So there is some fluidity that can be allowed for where the rate of need is, particularly with the transitioning, right, from five to six, grade five to grade six. But there would be some continuity there when you transition from eight to nine, because that would be the same person.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, so do we have to actually vote on this or is it more like a, you're sharing and you're asking for us to, um?
No, I do need.
We need official approval.
I need approval because I am, you're, you're essentially creating positions that aren't there.
Okay.
We do not have the assistant director positions. Uh, we, we still have the, the coordinators at the out of district as well as the pre-K. That's a shift. They're still there, they just would be on administrative contracts, but we're, we're, we are creating two new positions, although we're reallocating.
All right, so we need a motion to reorganize, um, student services.
I would move to approve the reorganization model for student services as presented by the superintendent.
I would second that.
Okay, so all those, or any other questions? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose none. Okay, now we're getting to the, um, agenda, Ms. Campbell. I'm sorry, the minutes, Ms. Campbell, yes.
Uh, the secretary moves to approve and release the minutes from the March fourth, March eleventh and March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and approve but not release the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? So all approved, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose none. Now we need the consent agenda.
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so any discussion? So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, none. So subcommittee liaison updates, curriculum and equity, we won't, we don't have that yet. We're going to figure out when, we're going to reschedule that first, probably the end of April. Policy, we shared last time, correct? I'm not forgetting. Policy, we already shared last at the last meeting.
We, we, um, we weren't able to have the policy subcommittee meeting, so we'll figure out a time before the end of the year.
Okay. Safety, we have that the end of April.
We do.
Now, so there's more updates with that. Deep?
I don't have any deep updates at this time.
Okay, Danvers Cares?
Danvers Cares, um, they're, they, the meeting recap, which I'll, I'll send to you, but just to highlight, you know, they're working on the teen health safety guide. Light the Night Purple will take place May fifteenth, from six to seven thirty at the PBD Institute Library. It's a, it's a great opportunity to come together and support, um, those that are in recovery. And certainly the recognition will take place at the end. Um, and that's it. I'll send this to you.
Madam Chair, just on, on deep real quickly.
Oh, yes.
They had the, um, wine tasting after our last meeting before this.
Did we not talk about that?
March fourteenth, no, we, I don't, no, we didn't.
No, it was, I thought it was, uh,
Oh.
We didn't have time to get to it last meeting. We didn't, we didn't get to the subcommittee's last meeting because it was long.
I just wanted to thank Mary Beth Vary and her team for all that they do to put that together, because it's a big task. And, uh, um, we really appreciate that and what deep does for our teachers.
I have to interject too, that, um, the, the last deep meeting, they brought in three students that are traveling to the international competition for DECA.
Oh, yeah.
And they spoke to the group and the DECA is just unbelievable in our district. We are so proud. There are over two hundred students that participate in DECA, which is more than a quarter of our school. And they have, I think, forty-one attending the international, which is outstanding. Those, those that placed high at the state level, um, and deep provides a lot of financial support to help defray the travel costs. I believe they're going to California, which is awesome. But also their, their work too. They will have the breakfast of champions that will be coming up toward the end of the school year, which is great. So make sure that you all have an invitation to that. It's an opportunity to honor our retirees and others who've made a contribution to our school community.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
CPAC we heard from and then, um, Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. I don't know if there's any updates.
No updates.
All right, so, um, our next meeting is virtual at five thirty on April twenty-ninth. So we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose none, so good night, Danvers. Thank you.